Thank you for bearing that with you.
I'll call the regular meeting of the Board of Aldermen to order on Tuesday, November 9, 2021 at 7:30 PM in the Aldermanic Chamber and via Zoom teleconference. Which meeting link can be found on the agenda and on the city's website calendar. Prayer will be offered by City Clerk Susan Levering and Alderman Karen will lead us in the Pledge to the Flag.
Almighty God, we have the high honor and the serious duty to manage the affairs of our beloved city. Fill us, O God, with the Spirit of unity and understanding, which enables us to face our multiple problems with a serene mind, with justice and charity for all, so that any and all decisions made by us will always be for the betterment and greater happiness of all our fellow citizens. So help us, God, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's start the meeting by taking a roll call attendance. If you are participating via Zoom, please state your presence, reason for not attending the meeting in person, and whether there is anyone in the room with you during this meeting, which is required under the right to no law. Madam Clerk?
Alvin O'Brien.
Present.
Alderman Cleve, here.
Alderwoman Kelly.
I'm here, being Zoom. I am alone in this room, and I am attending remotely due to a COVID exposure.
Alderman Dowd.
Present.
Alderman Karen.
Here.
Alderman Clemmons.
I am present, participating via Zoom. There is nobody in the room with me. I can hear the proceedings, and the reason I am participating via Zoom is work commitments.
Alderman Lopez.
Here.
Alderman Tanza.
Alderwoman Lou.
I'm here alone, and I'm attending by Zoom due to family matters.
Alderman Jettie.
Here.
Alderman Schmidt. Alderman Laws.
I'm here. I'm attending from Zoom because I'm watching this baby now.
Alderman Cleaver.
Present via Zoom because of mobility and health issues. No one is here.
Alderman Harriet Gathright.
I'm present.
Alderman Wulsher.
I'm here.
You have eight physically in attendance, and you have five participating via Zoom.
Thank you. Also with us this evening is Mayor Jim Donches and Corporation Council Steve Bolton. Mayor, did you wish to address the board this evening?
Yes, Madam President, thank you very much. First, I did want to update you on the COVID situation. Unfortunately, the numbers continue to rise. We, the two big measurements are the following. First, the number of new cases that have arisen per 100,000 people over the last 14 days, and that number is 403 in Nashua. The positivity rate is 8.1% at the present time. That means the number, the percentage of people who get tested for COVID who've come up having the disease, having the virus. Those numbers are higher than they've been recently, and so we can, need to continue to exercise caution and urge everyone to get vaccinated. Right now, Nashua is 52% fully vaccinated, with 57.4% having received at least one vaccination. Also, public health is holding a clinic for five to 11-year-olds who are now eligible. That will be December, or November 20th and December 11th, I believe they're full, and they have 720 scheduled vaccinations. So again, we should urge everyone to get vaccinated. Madam President, I wanted to go on to the election. First of all, I want to congratulate and thank, well, congratulate all of our successful candidates, thank everyone for participating, those who put themselves out, put themselves on the ballot. It's often not easy to put yourself forward like that, and whether you win or lose, you are working to try to make our community better. Of course, I want to thank those who voted, and all of the workers in the, in the polling places who did such a good job. And first and foremost, though, we owe a debt of gratitude again to Sue Levering, Allison Waite, those people in the City Clerk's office who again ran a very smooth election, no problems, went well. Turnout was actually very high for an off year. Over, like around 14,000 people voted. And Madam President, you may recall that this is a lot for an off year. Some other off-year elections a few years back, we only had about 7,500 people, this time 14,000. So we want to, should feel great gratitude that so many people are committed enough to come out even in an off year. Question two, of course, was, the result there was quite decisive. I did support and do support local control on all matters, including police commission, pensions, and all others. I believe local control is always best, but that, as I mentioned, that result was decisive. One item that I particularly wanted to mention, Madam President, is the appointment, my appointment of John Griffin, CFO, as the Treasurer-Tax Collector. That would consolidate those positions, CFO, Chief Financial Officer, and the Treasurer-Tax Collector with, under Mr. Griff, as Mr. Griffin. He and I have talked about the departure of David Fredette a number of times, and have been thinking about it. Mr. Griffin knows the treasurer's duties very well, having worked very closely with David Fredette over the last 11 years, John has been here 11 years. And there is precedent for the idea that the same person would be the treasurer and tax collector. That was the case before David Fredette was appointed as Treasurer-Tax Collector. So that nomination will be, I believe, going to the Personnel Committee on Monday night. I believe John, having served very successfully as CFO, is very capable, very qualified for this role, and that, given that our confidence, and I believe your confidence in him, I believe that's the best way to go for the city. But we will talk about that in more detail when the Personnel Committee meets next week. There were a couple items, Madam President, on the agenda that I wanted to mention. First, our 21-186 will proposes that we cancel debt, about $5 million that has been previously authorized but not used, and those projects are completed, so that would cancel that outstanding authorization. I did want to mention also, Madam President, our 21-193, which will fund the Riverfront Master Plan, the improvements that are planned there and that we've had in the works for some years. You may recall that the Riverfront Master Plan, adopted by the Board of Aldermen, calls for really a transformation of the Nashua Riverfront, including walkways, lighting, docking areas for people to enjoy, a new park area, as well as more suspended walkways around the corners of the Main Street Bridge. If you wish to see the spectacular projects that are incorporated there, please go to the, to the master plan on the website. I wanted to mention it particularly because the, although this is, will cost certainly the city some money, it will not affect the tax rate. And the reason is, is that we passed, the Board of Aldermen passed a few years back, the Tax Increment Financing District around the river. And what that has done is it has captured any new value that is generated around the river and devoted it into the Tax Increment Financing District, or the TIF, T-I-F. The funds that have been derived in the TIF, that are being derived in the TIF, are sufficient to pay the costs of the river, of the bonding of the Riverfront Master Plan, and therefore there should be no, there will be no impact on the tax rate. The, of course, philosophy behind the TIF, this is something off the rise by state law, is that as you make public improvements in an area such as the Nashua River, it will generate more private investment, which will in turn help be directed, the proceeds of that into the TIF and will help, will pay for the improvements in that, in that area. But that, of course, will be going to the Budget Committee, I presume, and you will hear more details later. Finally, Madam President, I wanted to mention that the Veterans Day Parade is coming on Thursday. I hope as many of the members of the Board of Aldermen as possible can attend. We unfortunately, as a result of COVID, have had to, we had to cancel last year's parade, and we had no Memorial Day Parade this year or last year, so this will be the first Veterans Parade we've had in a couple of years, and I know the Veterans Council headed by Barney Barbera is looking forward to it, and I believe the Nashua people will turn out to help honor our, help honor our veterans. So I hope you all can attend and march in the parade. And that's all I have, Madam President.
Thank you. For the record, Alderman Tanza joined us at 7:34. Response to remarks of Mayor Alderman O'Brien.
Yes, thank you. If I may, and I'm sure the mayor would agree, it's been a past practice also to invite Alderman-elect with this election to also come and share with the respect of our veterans, I'm sure.
That'd be great.
Well, Alderman Lopez.
Just a question for the mayor. I'm not sure if you know off the top of your head, but you mentioned that Nashua is 52% vaccinated, but you also mentioned that now that children, now children are eligible down to age five, does 52% include eligible Nashuans, or is that just the adult population?
The 52% includes the entire population, 91,000 people.
Okay, so that are eligible to be vaccinated, or the whole population in death?
Would be higher, yes.
Okay.
Anyone else? Seeing none? Recognition period.
There is none.
Reading minutes of previous meetings. There being no objection, I'll declare the minutes of the regular and special Board of Aldermen meetings of October 25th and October 26, 2021, to be accepted, placed on file, and the reading suspended. Communications requiring only procedural actions and written reports from liaisons.
Communication has been received from Karen A. Smith, Business Manager, regarding Resolution 21-185 Coronavirus Emergency Supplemental Funding Program.
There being no objection, I'll accept the communication and place it on file. Period for public comment relative to items expected to be acted upon this evening. We have two people that have signed up. Please, when I call you, come to the microphone, give your name and address for the record, and you have a three-minute period to address the board. Kristi Basada.
Good evening, Madam President, Mayor Donches, and members of the board. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Kristi Basada. I live at 12 Nutmeg Drive. I am pastor, or one of the pastors, at Main Street United Methodist Church, and I am here representing both the Nashua Interfaith Housing Justice Network and also the Granite State Organizing Project. I know that your agenda is packed, and so I will try to be brief and respectful of your time. I am here to support mandatory exclusionary, or inclusionary zoning, not exclusionary zoning. The United Methodist Church in its social principles affirms fair access to quality housing for all people regardless of income or any other social distinction. In my previous experience as a housing program manager in this city, I have seen how important affordable, stable housing is to the thriving of our community and its members. In this chamber, we have heard Director Cummings mention that employers evaluate our housing market when deciding whether to locate facilities in Nashua. And so it is very clear that an equitable housing market is essential for the well-being of the citizens of this city and also the businesses in this city. The Inclusionary Zoning Amendment on the agenda this evening begins to address the current affordable housing crisis in Nashua. My cohorts at GSOP and the Interfaith Housing Justice Network are in agreement that it should pass. We believe that the homeownership portion of this amendment is excellent. We also believe that some work could be done on the rental portion of the amendment, lowering the income targets a bit, so that it provides, so that it provides assistance to the families who are working hard and need it most. That said, we want it to pass either way, and we are looking forward to working with you on those targets in the future if it passes as written this evening. I hope that we will be able to celebrate the passage of this amendment this evening, and I thank you so much for your time.
Jonathan Spears-Savett.
Thank you. Again, Madam President, Mayor Donches, and honored leaders, fellow citizens, my name is Jonathan Spears-Savett. I live at 39 Coburn Avenue in Ward 1. I serve as Rabbi at Temple Beth Abraham. I am a board member along with Reverend Basada of the Nashua Area Interfaith Council, which is a coalition of more than 20 religious organizations in town, and with her, one of the participants and conveners of the Greater Nashua Interfaith Housing Justice Group. We meet, we have been meeting twice every month for about three years to work on affordable housing. And I have the honor also to serve on the Citizen Committee for the city's master plan, working with Director Marchand, we wish her so well, and the consultants and fellow citizens on the vision for our community. You can honor the work that we did on the master plan by approving the Inclusionary zoning and accepting the ARPA funds that we hope will be substantially purposed for the city's new Affordable Housing Trust Fund. I am so proud that our city has committed already so much time and energy in the government and private and citizen sectors to imagining steps that are bold and concrete, to support people who make Nashua already a center for their lives and want to live here, to make it possible for builders to build profitably and landlords to rent. I'm proud of the proposal in front of you that embodies values of inclusion and equity in ways that are big and small, from its funding and regulations scheme to its recognition that people who live in the same building should use the same entry regardless of what they're paying for rent. Community is more than people in the same place living lives in parallel. It's a covenant that we deepen together, a stake in each other's lives that's built out of all these kinds of steps we take. Like Reverend Basada, I do hope that the target levels for some of the inclusionary zoning will be dropped to align it better with some of the data in the studies that we have seen and that you have seen as well, but hope it will pass in any case. As clergy people who are civic leaders, I and many colleagues are committed to continuing to work with you, with city officials, developers, and any other partners, and to tapping into the networks and resources in our congregations that could help us bring to life what these policies envision. Thank you for the attention you've been devoting to housing justice, especially over this past challenging year.
We do have someone on Zoom that has their hand raised. Mr. Keating?
Yes, hi. My name is Bob Keating from Five Coburn Woods, member of Granite State Organizing Project. I'd like to build on what Reverend Basada and Rabbi has, has reported of it. I appreciate the efforts the city has made on inclusionary zoning, and I know we're not, not vote on ARPA tonight in terms of the specific plan, but I'm pleased to that that's moving forward, and it seems to be there's a lot of support for the affordable housing idea on it. But specifically in terms of the money, the proposal for inclusionary zoning, I just want to highlight, one can easily get lost in all the numbers, but if we look at what a family of four, for the median income, it's $109,000. So if we stay with the inclusionary zoning at 80%, that would be in the neighborhood of $80,000. If we move it down to 60%, then we have an income of $66,000. If you look at a three-bedroom apartment, the average at $2350, you see the difference between an 80 and a 60%. It's basically one family would have to pay up more than $700 over 30% of their income. That would be the 60% of the median income, and the, the family with the 80% would be $350. So that's why we've looked at the idea and recommending to be able to, to look for larger productions. We're not speaking about homeownership, we're only speaking about rentals, and we're only speaking of when there's 50 units or more, and we're very cognizant of the idea about developers. We don't want them to lose any money in this. It would be reverend, it would be revenue neutral. So again, I thank the, the board, I think there's a considerable amount of support, and I would ask you to consider that one adaptation around the 60% figure for large developers who are producing 50 or more units in this city. So thanks again for all of the efforts that this board has done in moving toward creating the Housing Trust, and hopefully when we come to the ARPA recommendations, that we'll be able to see that in a considerable way. So thanks again.
See no one else? Okay. Communications requiring final approval.
Communication has been received from David Andrews, Lead Mapper, New Hampshire Mapathon Citizen Mapping Project, Brian Beal, Deputy Director, Organizer, Mapathon Coalition, regarding proposed Nashua Ward lines to allow for two New Hampshire Senate districts.
There being no objection, I'll refer the communication to the Personnel Administrative Affairs Committee.
Communication has been received from Mayor James Donches regarding temporary policy on leave due to coronavirus COVID-19.
Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to make a motion to approve the temporary policy on leave due to coronavirus disease COVID-19 by roll call.
You've heard the motion. Is there discussion on that motion? Alderman Jettie?
Could we, we just have a brief explanation as to what the policy is going to do?
Sure. Mayor Donches?
Yes, and I believe Director Bagley may be on the call as well. I see Director Kleiner here, who could also discuss this. But the basic idea here is to create an incentive for people to get vaccinated. And what it says is that if you are absent as a result of a COVID-19 infection and you have been vaccinated, you will not need to use your sick days during the period of your absence. But on the other hand, if you are, if you get a COVID-19 case and you are not vaccinated and need to be out as a result of your, having contracted the virus, then, and you are unvaccinated, you will be charged sick days. So it creates a distinction in terms of use of sick days between those people who are vaccinated and those who are not. Thank you.
Alderman Cleve.
Thank you. I, I just have one question, and maybe you said it and I just missed it. What if there was a situation where a person medically could not have the vaccine, and then they, they did get it, would they still have to sign for leave?
I don't know that we have, I don't know that we have gotten into that level of distinction. I would suggest if that does happen, that, now, in order to get, in order to not have your sick days used, you have to produce medical evidence that, in other words, a vaccination report from a, from a medical provider. I suppose if we received a medical provider's opinion that someone could not get vaccinated for some reason, we would take that into account.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Cleve.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Tanza.
Yes.
Alderwoman Lou.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Laws.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gathright.
Yes.
Alderman Wulsher.
Yes.
You have 14 yeas and zero nays.
And that motion carries.
Communication has been received from Susan K. Levering, City Clerk, regarding canvas of returns of November 2, 2021 municipal general election, and the request for recount of votes cast for the Ward 1 Alderman race.
Alderman Karen.
Yes, thank you. I'd like to make a motion to accept and place on file the record of the returns from the municipal election of November 2, 2021, that the election results for the candidate's name therein be declared final and conclusive, and the candidates having received the largest number of votes cast for the number of positions available for the respective offices be declared duly elected by roll call vote for the ensuing term, with the exception of the race for Ward 1 Alderman, which a request has been made for a recount, and a special Board of Aldermen meeting has been scheduled for Saturday, November 13, 2021, at 9:00 AM in the City Hall Auditorium for the purpose of conducting a recount of the ballots cast for the Ward 1 Alderman race.
Continue?
Five boys vote.
No? And to replace the unofficial results of the November 2, 2021 municipal election with a copy placed on your desk this evening.
Oh, I don't have that.
Thank you.
Okay.
So you've heard the motion. Is there discussion on that motion? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Cleve.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Tanza.
Yes.
Alderwoman Lou.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Laws. Alderman Cleaver.
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gathright.
Yes.
Alderman Wulsher.
Yes.
You have 14 yeas and zero nays.
And that motion carries. There being no objection, I'll suspend the rules to allow for the introduction of a communication that was received after the agenda was prepared.
Communication has been received from Susan K. Levering, City Clerk, regarding proposed rules of procedure relative to the recount of the ballots cast for the Ward 1 Alderman race of the November 2, 2021 municipal general election.
Alderman Karen.
Yes, thank you. I'd like to make a motion to accept, place on file, and adopt the rules of procedure for recounts as modeled under RSA 660-5, conduct of recount by roll call.
You've heard the motion. Discussion on that motion? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Cleve.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Tanza.
Yes.
Alderwoman Lou.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Laws.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gathright.
Yes.
Alderman Wulsher.
Yes.
You have 14 yeas and zero nays.
And that motion carries. Petitions.
Petitions for street acceptances have been received for Mint Away and Shore Drive.
There being no objection, I'll accept the petitions for street acceptance, refer them to the Committee on Infrastructure, and schedule public hearings for Wednesday, December 8, 2021, at 7:00 PM in the Aldermanic Chamber. Nominations, appointments, and elections. Nominations, appointments, and elections.
Appointments by the President of the Board of Alderman. To the Honorable Board of Alderman, I have this day appointed Oscar Velasis of 76 Bullbear Avenue, Nashua, to the Citizens Advisory Commission for a term to expire October 1, 2022, and Charlie Matthews of 27 Pendleton Farms Lane, Amherst, New Hampshire, to the Hunt Legacy Trustees for a term to expire December 31, 2023, and respectfully request that these appointments be confirmed. Appointments by the Mayor. To the Honorable Board of Alderman, I have this day appointed Brendan Martin of 23 Damon Ave, Nashua, to the Conservation Commission for a term to expire November 30, 2024, Adrian George of 18 Shingle Mill Drive, Nashua, and Michael Turcock of 36 East Artisan Street, Nashua, to the Energy and Environment Committee for terms to expire October 31, 2024, and November 30, 2024, respectively, and William Quinn of 85 Conkett Street, Nashua, to the Historic District Commission for a term to expire November 30, 2024.
There being no objection, I'll accept the appointments by the President, and the Mayor has read, and refer them to the Personnel Administrative Affairs Committee.
An additional appointment by the Mayor has been submitted to the Honorable Board of Alderman. I have this day appointed John L. Griffin, Tinsborough, Massachusetts, to the Office of CFO, Treasurer, Tax Collector, for an indefinite term at the pleasure of the Mayor, and respectfully request that this appointment be confirmed.
There being no objection, I'll accept the appointment of Office of CFO, Treasurer, Tax Collector by the Mayor has read, and refer this to the Special Personnel Administrative Affairs Committee, which is, will be held on Monday, November 15, at 7:00 p.m. in the Aldermanic Chamber. Reports of committee. There being no objection, I will declare the reports of the October 18, and October 21, 2021 work-study group relative to police commissioners be accepted and placed on file. There being no objection, I will declare the report of the October 19 joint meeting of the Planning and Economic Development Committee and the Committee on Infrastructure be accepted and placed on file. There being no objection, I will declare the report of the October 20, 2021 Finance Committee be accepted and placed on file. There being no objection, I will declare the report of the October 25 Budget Review Committee be accepted and placed on file. There being no objection, I will declare the report of the November 3, 2021 Pennachuck Water Special Committee be accepted and placed on file. There being no objection, I will suspend the rules to allow for the oral report of the Human Affairs Committee meeting held Monday, October 25 regarding Resolutions 21-177 and 21-178. Alderwoman Kelly.
Thank you, President Wiltshire. The Human Affairs Committee met last night in the Aldermanic Chamber to discuss a number of pieces that will burn up this evening, including the ARPA funds, which a number of commenters commented on, that is just acceptance of funds. Everything that came before us was put forward for the recommendation of final passage unanimously. And there was also the piece R. 21-166, which was about the intersection at Bridge Street. And everybody on the committee was excited to see that moved forward after a number of years of pushing that. So I can talk to these individually as they come up as well, but that's a quick outline.
Thank you, Alderman Kelly. Confirmation of Mayor's appointments. There being no objection, I will confirm the reappointment of Robert Cannaway, 7 McDonald's Drive, Nashua, to the Capital Improvements Committee with a term to expire August 1, 2022. Is Mr. Cannaway here in the audience? Not seeing him, he'll be sworn in at a later date. There being no objection, I will confirm the new appointment of Megan Cook, 24 Harris Road, Nashua, to the Conservation Commission with a term to expire September 30, 2024. Is Megan Cook? Oh, she's on Zoom. Okay. The city attorney will administer the oath of office, Megan?
Ms. Cook, are you there?
She has to unmute.
You have to unmute. There you go.
Yeah, I'm here.
There you go.
Would you raise your right hand, please? Do you solemnly swear that you will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all the duties incumbent upon you as a member of the Conservation Commission of the City of Nashua according to the best of your abilities and agreeably to the rules and regulations of the city charter and the Constitution and laws of the state of New Hampshire so help you God?
I do.
Thank you.
Thank you, Megan. Okay. There being no objection, I'll confirm the following new appointments to the Cultural Connections Committee. Elizabeth Berry, 505 Amherst Street, Nashua, Josefina Perez, 136 West Pearl Street, Nashua, and Elaine Kuna Ergelis, 23 Timberline Drive, Nashua, to the Cultural Connections Committee with terms to expire September 30, 2024. Are any of the aforementioned individuals either in the audience, or okay, you can come up and be sworn in? Anyone else on Zoom that Josefina?
I'm here.
Okay. Come on up.
That's good. Raise your right hand, please. Do you solemnly swear that you will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all the duties incumbent upon you as a member of the Cultural Connections Commission of the City of Nashua according to the best of your abilities, agreeably to the rules and regulations of the city charter and the Constitution and laws of the state of New Hampshire so help you God? Thank you.
Thank you very much. The other individuals will be sworn in at a later date. There being no objection, I'll confirm the new appointment of Harriet Young, 29 Musket Drive, Nashua, to the Legacy, Hunt Legacy Trustees with a term to expire December 31, 2022. She is not in attendance tonight and will be sworn in at a later date. There being no objection, I will confirm the new appointments to the IRAF Harris Lecture Trustees. Marjorie Bollinger Hogan, 67 Cannon Gate Road, Nashua, and Liz Retopy, 15 Dunstable Road, Nashua, with terms to expire December 31, 2023. Would you please come up and get sworn in?
Would you raise your right hand, please? Do each of you solemnly swear that you will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all of the duties incumbent upon you as a trustee of the IRAF Harris Lecture Fund Trustees according to the best of your ability and agreeably to the rules and regulations of the city charter and the Constitution and laws of the state of New Hampshire so help you God? Thank you.
Thank you. There being no objection, I will confirm the reappointment of Stacy Vignalt of 6 New Hampshire Ave, Nashua, to the Minefall Park Advisory Committee with a term to expire January 31, 2024. Is Stacy in the audience this evening or on Zoom? Okay, she will be sworn in at a later date. Unfinished business resolutions.
Second reading of Resolution R. 21-166 relative to the approval of an undated New Hampshire Department of Transportation project agreement and acceptance and appropriation of federal aid surface transportation funds from the state of New Hampshire for the purpose of improving existing signalized intersection where East Hollis Street and Canal Street meet Bridge Street.
Alderman Cle?
Thank you, Madam President. I motion for final passage of R. 21-166 by roll call, please.
Motion is for final passage of Resolution 21-166. Discussion on that motion? Alderwoman Kelly.
This one, I thought, was worth a little bit of a deeper just overview of what was talked about at the committee last night. So both Director Cummings and Julie Chisholm were on hand to discuss, you know, how this has gone through. There is a plan that was shared with us that has been worked on, both with community members and community input, as well as a number of committees in the city, including the Planning Board, and they all gave favorable recommendations to this. As I understand it, this project is a long time and a lot of coming, and it's federal funds with a 20% match. If we go up to the 4.6, it's 3.6. I'm rounding here, so nobody get me on the two. I think it's 4.67. And then above that, we would have to do a 50% match.
This has been in the, in the works since 2014, I believe we were told last night. So this has been a long time coming. Further discussion on the motion for final passage? Alderman Cle?
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to add that Director Cummings did reassure us that the 20% would be within his budget, and that monies have been put aside for that. So no additional funds would be. If they go up to the 4.57%, they'd have to do the 20% matching funds. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Cle.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Tenza.
Yes.
Alderwoman Lou.
Yes.
Alderman Juddi.
Yes.
Alderman Laws.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes.
Alderwoman Harriet Gathright.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
You are 14 yeas and zero nays.
That motion carries, and Resolution 21-166 is declared duly adopted.
Second reading of Resolution R. 21-167 relative to the acceptance of $16,138,777 from the Coronavirus State and Local Fiscal Recovery Funds SLFRF program established by the American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA, to cover eligible expenses and/or revenue replacement in responding to COVID-19 impacts.
Alderman Harriet Gathright.
Madam Chair, I motion for final passage of R. 21-167, and I would like to speak to it.
Alderman Harriet Gathright.
Last night, Director Cummings did, was in our meeting, and he mentioned that he had comments on the website for economic development. He also asked that the public actually spread the news to reach out to economic development so that he can get additional comments. Most of the comments that he's received thus far is for housing, affordable housing, which is great, but he wants more comments to come in from the public. So for all of you out there, please contact Director Cummings.
Thank you. Alderman Lopez.
I just also wanted to point out that while we're developing the plan for this, this is, this motion and Alderman Gathright, correct me if I'm wrong, is just to agree to accept it, not necessarily to identify exactly how we're designating it for our election.
That's correct.
And that's where that comment is very important.
That's correct, Alderman Lopez.
Thank you.
Alderman Cle?
Thank you, Madam President. And I did want to add what Alderman Lopez said, that yes, that was, sorry, just to accept it. I'm sorry. Just to accept it, but that's okay. The other comment that I did want to make was, in addition to what Alderwoman Harriet Gathright had said, Director Cummings had asked us to, to send people to his website, his page. Under Projects, you'll see ARPA. Under ARPA, there is the feedback. It's a very limited questionnaire, so if you do have comments that go beyond that, you can send them to Amy Derosha, and her email is at, address is on there, too. I've had a couple of constituents who have sent me an email, and I sent them forward to it. And in these two cases, they did, had nothing to do with affordable housing, however. Affordable housing seems to be the number one where they want to spend the money. They were, we were given a number of scenarios, if I remember correctly, back in September, in October. They have had some presentations, and the PowerPoint slide that we saw is also on that website, so, and I think questions should be directed towards Director Cummings and Ms. Derosha. Thank you.
Alderwoman Kelly?
Well, most of the things I was going to say haven't said, but that's fine. I just wanted to remind everybody again that we are only accepting these funds and that to Alderman Harriet Gathright's point, we are going to continue to get feedback on what the community would like to see us use these ARPA funds for, reminding the board here and the public that we did have a special meeting where we talked about the different options. One was downtown, one was affordable housing, and you know, I personally have heard overwhelmingly that the affordable housing piece is really critical to people in the community, especially right now. And so I'm hoping that that is where we will land. Couple of points that were brought up by Director Cummings last night. He has reached out to all the directors in the city to get a wish list from them, and that'll come before us as well when we talk about this. And he also mentioned bringing on a consultant to help make sure we're using the ARPA funds correctly. So pieces that will come as we continue with this piece, but just wanted to give some of that information.
Anyone else? Alderwoman Lou?
Thank you. I would just like to ask if the Zoom meetings were held to discuss, you know, to gather input on this could be placed on the website as well? Thank you.
We can ask Director Cummings that. Okay. Motion is for final passage, Resolution 21-167 by roll call. Anything further? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Cle.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Tenza.
Yes.
Alderwoman Lou.
Yes.
Alderman Juddi.
Yes.
Alderman Laws.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes.
Alderwoman Harriet Gathright.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
You are 14 yeas and zero nays.
That motion carries, and Resolution 21-167 is declared duly adopted.
Second reading of Resolution R. 21-174 relative to the acceptance of $25,000 from the state of New Hampshire Department of Safety State Homeland Security Grant Program into fire grant activity, 2020 Homeland Security Grant Program.
Alderwoman Kelly?
Thank you, President Wiltshire. I would like to move for final passage of R. 21-174 by roll call.
Motion is for final passage of R. 21-174. Discussion on that motion? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Cle.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Tenza.
Yes.
Alderwoman Lou.
Yes.
Alderman Juddi.
Yes.
Alderman Laws.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes.
Alderwoman Harriet Gathright.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
You are 14 yeas and zero nays.
That motion carries, and Resolution 21-174 is declared duly adopted.
Second reading of Resolution R. 21-175 relative to the acceptance of $300,000 from the state of New Hampshire Department of Safety into police grant activity FY2022 opioid abuse reduction initiative, ORAC grant.
Alderman Karen?
Yes, thank you. I'd like to make a motion for final passage of R-21-175 by roll call.
You've heard the motion. Is there discussion on that motion? Alderwoman Kelly?
Alderman Wiltshire?
Yes, Alderwoman Kelly.
Thank you. Just a quick comment. I know that Lieutenant Walsh, who was here last night, just mentioned that we did not get this, what we had, had been annual allotment last year due to COVID, so I was grateful to see that come back. We've had our sights on a global pandemic, but the opioid crisis is still with us, so we appreciate about this money.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Alderman Harriet Gathright?
And he also mentioned that it's a no-match grant, and that was great.
Alderman Lou?
Thank you. Just for my information, when we, when we approve this... when we, when we approved this, have we looked at it? Are there requirements or, you know, other than matches that come along with these grants? And are those part of what is reviewed in committee?
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Motion is for final passage. Alderman Lopez?
I just want to clarify, this is a no-match grant. We're not matching it.
Thank you. Further discussion? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien?
Yes.
Alderman Clay?
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly?
Yes.
Alderman Dowd?
Yes.
Alderman Karen?
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons?
Yes.
Alderman Lopez?
Yes.
Alderman Tenza?
Yes.
Alderwoman Lou?
Yes.
Alderman Juddi?
Yes.
Alderman Laws?
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver?
Yes.
Alderwoman Harriet Gathright?
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire?
Yes.
You have 14 yeas and zero nays.
That motion carries and Resolution 21-175 is declared duly adopted.
Second reading of Resolution R. 21-176, relative to the acceptance of $128,781.82 from the Federal Department of Homeland Security into fire grant activity FY 2020, assistance to firefighters grant, and authorizing the transfer of matching funds.
Alderman Karen?
Yes, thank you. I'd like to make a motion for final passage of R-21-176 by roll call.
Further motion is there? Discussion on that motion. Alderwoman Kelly?
I don't have to talk a lot tonight. This is, file this under Weird Things You Learn as Board of Aldermen participant, but this money is, is a grant that has matching funds, and they're going to be using it for a dryer for hazardous waste suits.
Now, I believe this grant was the, to screen for health issues for firefighters? Yep, the one we passed a few minutes ago was the, for the dryers for the hazardous materials, the suits.
I apologize for my mix-up.
That's okay. That's okay.
Still an interesting fact.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien?
Yes.
Alderman Clay?
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly?
Yes.
Alderman Dowd?
Yes.
Alderman Karen?
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons?
Yes.
Alderman Lopez?
Yes.
Alderman Tenza?
Yes.
Alderwoman Lou?
Yes.
Alderman Juddi?
Yes.
Alderman Laws?
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver?
Yes.
Alderwoman Harriet Gathright?
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire?
Yes.
You have 14 yeas and zero nays.
That motion carries and Resolution 21-176 is declared duly adopted.
Second reading of Resolution R. 21-181, authorizing Penichoff Corporation and Penichoff East Utility, Inc. to enter into a loan with CoBank ACB.
Alderman Laws?
Thank you, Madam President. I move for final passage of R. 21-181 by roll call.
Motion is for final passage of R. 21-181 by roll call. Discussion on that motion. Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien?
Yes.
Alderman Clay?
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly?
Yes.
Alderman Dowd?
Yes.
Alderman Karen?
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons?
Yes.
Alderman Lopez?
Yes.
Alderman Tenza?
Yes.
Alderwoman Lou?
Yes.
Alderman Juddi?
Yes.
Alderman Laws?
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver?
Yes.
Alderwoman Harriet Gathright?
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire?
Yes.
You have 14 yeas and zero nays.
That motion carries and Resolution 21-181 is declared duly adopted. Unfinished business ordinances.
Second reading of Ordinance O. 21-71, removing the fine limitation on animal ordinance violations relating to dogs.
Alderman Clay?
Thank you, Madam President. I motion for final passage of O. 21-71 by roll call, and may I speak briefly to it?
Alderman Clay?
Thank you very much. The reason for this was to put fines for all of the animals into basically the same category. Previously, we had a different violations relating to dogs versus cows versus chickens versus, and truthfully, the, we were kind of harder on chickens and cows and so on. So this, what it does is it takes away basically the limitation. It allows the animal control officer, at their discretion, to do education prior to having to give a mandatory fine. So in other words, there may be a time when you're, you weren't looking, and your dog is a great escape artist and has gotten out the door. And rather than having to throw a fine at you or of some sort, a $25 fine, they're able to educate. But at the same time, if you have a owner that is just allowing their dog off-leash, allowing the dog to escape from the yard on a regular basis, it allows them to give a graduated fine. The ADPAC Committee had looked at a variety of different municipalities, Manchester, Portsmouth, various things, looked at them, considered adopting those, but the truth is, it's just complicated things. And by removing the fine limitation, again, it put all of the animals right into the same category, and it gave the flexibility of education, et cetera, to the animal control officer. So I would like to see a positive of passage of this. Thank you.
Discussion? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien?
Yes.
Alderman Clay?
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly?
Yes.
Alderman Dowd?
Yes.
Alderman Karen?
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons?
Yes.
Alderman Lopez?
Yes.
Alderman Tenza?
Yes.
Alderwoman Lou?
Yes.
Alderman Juddi?
Yes.
Alderman Laws?
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver?
Yes.
Alderwoman Harriet Gathright?
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire?
Yes.
You have 14 yeas and zero nays.
That motion carries and Ordinance 21-071 is declared duly adopted.
Second reading of Ordinance O. 21-72, authorizing free holiday parking at meters in Zone 3, which includes the Elm Street and High Street parking garages from December 6 of 2021 through January 1 of 2022.
Alderman Tenza?
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to make a motion for final passage of O. 21-072 by roll call.
Motion is for final passage. Discussion on that motion. Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien?
Yes.
Alderman Clay?
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly?
Yes.
Alderman Dowd?
Yes.
Alderman Karen?
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons?
Yes.
Alderman Lopez?
Yes.
Alderman Tenza?
Yes.
Alderwoman Lou?
Yes.
Alderman Juddi?
Yes.
Alderman Laws?
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver?
Yes.
Alderwoman Harriet Gathright?
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire?
Yes.
You have 14 yeas and zero nays.
That motion carries and Ordinance 21-072 is declared duly adopted. New business resolutions.
First reading of Resolution R. 21-182, relative to the acceptance of a granite bench donated to the city by the Memorial Fund for Sylvia Gale.
Additional sponsors: Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Clay, Alderman Lopez, Alderman Tenza, Alderman Harriet Gathright, and myself. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Budget Review Committee.
Alderwoman Kelly and Alderwoman, and Alderman Cleaver.
Sorry.
Oh, sorry, I didn't see your hands left. Sorry.
Thank you. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Budget Review Committee.
First reading of Resolution R. 21-183, relative to the acceptance of $58,000 from the State of New Hampshire Department of Justice into police grant activity, 2022 Violence Against Women Act, BAWA, grant program, and to authorize the transfer of matching funds.
Additional sponsors: Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Clay, Alderman Dowd, Alderwoman Kelly, Alderman Karen, Alderman Lopez, Alderman Tenza, Alderman Harriet Gathright, myself.
Alderman Laws?
Alderman Laws. Given its first reading, I will assign that to the Human Affairs Committee.
First reading of Resolution R. 21-184, relative to the acceptance of $34,600 from the United States Department of Justice into police grant activity, 2021 Justice Assistance Grant, multi-jurisdictional.
Additional sponsors: Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Clay, Alderman Dowd, Alderman Karen, Alderman Lopez, Alderman Harriet Gathright, myself, Alderman Cleaver. That's everyone. Given its first reading, I will assign that to the Human Affairs Committee.
First reading of Resolution R. 21-185, relative to the acceptance of $18,795 from the State of New Hampshire Department of Justice into police grant activity, 2022 Coronavirus Emergency Supplemental Funding, CESF, program.
Alderman Dowd?
Yes. I'd also like to co-sponsor.
Okay, I'll ask for sponsors first, okay?
Yeah.
Additional sponsors: Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Clay, Alderman Dowd, Alderman Karen, Alderman Lopez, Alderman Harriet Gathright, myself, Alderman Cleaver. Alderman Dowd?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules for second reading, R. 21-185 by roll call.
Motion is to suspend the rules for a second reading. Discussion on that? Alderman Juddi?
Could we get an explanation as to why we need a second reading? Can I, what this is about?
Mr. Man. Which one are we on? Is this a second reading funding?
21-185.
Because the, they want the money right away.
And what's it for?
It's to help combat the coronavirus. I believe that this is supplementing some funding that they've been spending so that they can balance their books and they get the grant from the state.
All set, Alderman Juddi?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Alderwoman Lou?
Thank you. Are there any requirements for this, such as everyone has to be vaccinated? I mean, I understand that in committee, the committee usually looks at the, I can't think of the phrase, but the contingencies that are required to accepting something. So.
Well, on a grant like this, this is a police department grant, so they are more on top of the details. I mean, they've asked us to accommodate them by putting this through right away, you know, which seems reasonable. And so I think the detailed questions should be directed to them.
Okay. And just to follow up, please?
Certainly.
Did someone say that this was to help them balance their books? Just if you could expand on that, I'm not sure what that means.
Alderman Dowd?
It's not to balance their books, it's to, they've been spending money in this area, and this is grant money that will help them continue to do the work in this area. It's not to balance their books.
Okay, thank you.
Motion to suspend. Alderman Clay?
Madam President, when I'm looking at the participants, it looks like one of the commissioners may be on. I don't know if he would be able to answer any of the questions.
I don't see anyone stepping up. Nope.
No.
I guess not. The grant, the grant itself has parameters that have to be followed in order for them to get the money. So I'm okay with that. Motion to suspend. Any further discussion? Alderman Clay?
Actually, no, not to suspend. I'll talk about it when it comes.
Okay. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien?
Yes.
Alderman Clay?
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly?
Yes.
Alderman Dowd?
Yes.
Alderman Karen?
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons?
Yes.
Alderman Lopez?
Yes.
Alderman Tenza?
Yes.
Alderwoman Lou?
Yes.
Alderman Juddi?
Yes.
Alderman Laws?
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver?
Yes.
Alderwoman Harriet Gathright?
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire?
Yes.
You have 14 yeas and zero nays.
That motion carries.
Second reading of Resolution R. 21-185, relative to the acceptance of $18,795 from the State of New Hampshire Department of Justice into police grant activity, from the State of New Hampshire Department of Justice into police grant activity, 2022 Coronavirus Emergency Supplemental Funding, CESF program.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion for final passage of R. 21-185 by a rule call.
Motion is for final passage. Further discussion? Alderman Clay.
Thank you, Madam President. In looking at the analysis of this, it's very clear that it says that the, it's part of, I'm sorry, the resolution authorized the city to accept the $18,795 from the State of New Hampshire Department of Justice for the purposes of preventing, preparing for, and responding to the coronavirus. This funding is contingent upon approval by the governor and executive council and shall be in effect through January 20th, 2022. And then it does say, due to the short timeframe, the police department is requesting final passage of this legislation at the November 9th, 2021 Board of Aldermen meeting. No local match is required. So I think that kind of somewhat answers some of the questions we've had.
Any further discussion on the motion for final passage? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the rule?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Clay.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Tenza.
Yes.
Alderwoman Lou.
Yes.
Alderman Jody.
Yes.
Alderman Laws.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes.
Alderwoman Harry Gathright.
Yes.
Alderman Mulcher.
Yes.
You have 14 yeses and zero nays.
That motion carries and Resolution 21-185 is declared duly adopted.
First reading of Resolution R. 21-186, relative to the rescinding of authorized unissued debt.
Additional sponsors: Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Clay, Alderman Dowd, Alderman Lopez, Alderman Tenza, and myself. Given its first reading, I'll assign, oh, I'm sorry, anyone online? Okay. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Budget Review Committee.
First reading of Resolution R. 21-187, changing the purpose of up to $442,25 of unextended bond proceeds from the LED streetlight project to infrastructure improvements, sidewalk construction for the design, repair, and construction of sidewalks.
Given its, oh, additional sponsors: Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Clay, Alderman Dowd, Alderman Lopez, Alderman Kelly, Alderman Cleaver, Alderman Lou, Alderman Clemmons.
Alderman Laws.
Alderman Laws, Alderman Tenza, Alderman Harry Gathright, and myself. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Budget Review Committee, the Board of Public Works, and schedule a special Board of Aldermen public hearing on Tuesday, December 7th, 2021, at 7:00 PM in the Aldemannic Chamber.
First reading of Resolution R. 21-188, authorizing a one-time stipend to Board of Public Works Retirement System retirees as requested by the Board of Public Works Retirement System Board of Trustees.
Additional sponsors: Alderman Dowd, Alderman Lopez, and myself. Alderman Harry Gathright. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Budget Review Committee.
First reading of Resolution R. 21-189, authorizing the mayor and city treasurer to issue bonds not to exceed the amount of $1,859,440 for various improvements at the Solid Waste Department or Hills landfill and the purchase of a refuse truck and wheeled loader.
Additional sponsors: Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Dowd, Alderman Lopez, Alderman Cleaver. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Budget Review Committee, the Board of Public Works, and schedule a special Board of Aldermen public hearing on Tuesday, December 7th, 2021, at 7:00 PM in the Aldemannic Chamber.
First reading of Resolution R. 21-190, relative to the supplemental appropriation of $3,650,000 of FY 2021 Unanticipated Revenue into the Division of Public Works Office Facility Capital Fund.
Additional sponsors: Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Dowd, Alderman Lopez, Alderman Harry Gathright, Alderman Cleaver, Alderman Lou.
And myself.
I'm sorry?
I don't think you.
Oh, Alderman Clay?
Yes.
Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Budget Review Committee, Board of Public Works, and schedule a special Board of Aldermen meeting, Special Board of Aldermen public hearing on Monday, November 22nd, at 7:00 PM in the Aldemannic Chamber.
First reading of Resolution R. 21-191, changing the purpose of $2 million of unextended bond proceeds from the Broad Street Parkway project to the Division of Public Works Office Facility project.
Additional sponsors: Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Clay, Alderman Dowd, Alderman Lopez, Alderman Harry Gathright, Alderman Cleaver. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Budget Review Committee, the Board of Public Works, and schedule a special Board of Aldermen public hearing on Monday, November 22nd, at 7:00 PM in the Aldemannic Chamber.
First reading of Resolution R. 21-192, authorizing the mayor and city treasurer to issue bonds not to exceed the amount of $3 million for additional costs for the design and construction of a Division of Public Works Office facility.
Additional sponsors: Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Clay, Alderman Dowd, Alderman Lopez, Alderman Harry Gathright, Alderwoman Lou, Alderman Cleaver, and myself. Did I get everybody? Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Budget Review Committee, the Board of Public Works, and schedule a special Board of Aldermen public hearing on Monday, November 22nd, at 7:00 PM in the Aldemannic Chamber.
First reading of Resolution R. 21-193, authorizing the mayor and city treasurer to issue bonds not to exceed the amount of $21 million to fund architectural engineering surveying, construction, and other related work for the design and construction of a Riverwalk adjacent to the Nashville River near Main Street.
Additional sponsors: Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Clay, Alderman Cleaver.
Alderman Laws.
Alderman Laws. Alderman Clemmons. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Budget Review Committee and sched- I'm sorry? Alderwoman Lou, I'm sorry. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Budget Review Committee and schedule a special Board of Aldermen public hearing on Tuesday, December 7th, at 7:00 PM in the Aldemannic Chamber.
First reading of Resolution R. 21-194, relative to the acceptance of $30,000 from the Nashville Rotary West into Public Works Grant Activity, Disc Golf Course.
Additional sponsors: Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Clemmons, Alderman Cleaver, Alderman Harry Gathright, and myself.
You hear Alderman Laws?
And Alderman Laws, thank you. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Budget Review Committee. New business ordinances.
First reading of Ordinance O. 21-73, amending the Inclusionary Zoning Supplemental Use Regulations.
Additional sponsors: Alderman O'Brien, oh, you're already on there.
Already on there.
Alderman Dowd. Alderman Harry Gathright, Alderman Clemmons, Alderwoman Lou, and myself. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Planning and Economic Development Committee, Planning Board, and schedule a special Board of Aldermen public hearing on Tuesday, December 21st, at 7:00 PM in the Aldemannic Chamber.
First reading of Ordinance O. 21-74, prohibiting trucks on Eaton Street.
Additional sponsors: Alderman Clay. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Committee on Infrastructure. Oh, I'm sorry, Alderwoman Lou. I'll add Alderwoman Lou as a sponsor, please.
First reading of Ordinance O. 21-75, authorizing a yield sign on Manchester Street at its intersection with Conference Street.
Additional sponsors: Alderman Dowd, Alderman Harry Gathright, Alderman Lopez. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Committee on Infrastructure.
First reading of Ordinance O. 21-76, relative to seasonal road closures and elimination of certain on-street parking preused by restaurants for outdoor dining.
Additional sponsors: Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Clemmons.
Alderman Laws.
Alderman Laws, Alderman Cleaver, and myself. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Committee on Infrastructure. Next is a period for public comment. There is no one signed up here in the chamber. I have on line Ms. O'Donovan.
Hi, good evening. Couple things. I listened to the sick leave policy that you adopted tonight, or as an incentive to get people vaccinated. And I'm just curious to know if that's a violation of any of the union contracts to specify that they can't use their sick leave if they catch COVID and are not vaccinated. Also, I think it would have been good if the city had recognized another thing, and that is if a employee has a letter from a doctor that says they've had COVID, that that would be recognized as well. So if they had natural immunity, it would be recognized. And they would be able to use their sick leave if they caught it a second time. I think that's reasonable. I don't know why we don't give any credit to natural immunity, because they do if you go into Europe now. You can get into a country with a vaccine card or a note from a doctor that you've had COVID. Also, I think the bonding for the DPW facility, I'd like you to pay attention to that, because it looks like we're approving money that's going to the Budget Committee that now takes the project up over 17 million. I have followed along with that project, and what I heard was approved was 15. There's another couple million that got slipped in there. And I'd like to understand why that happened or what that money is used for. And I'll pay attention to that when it goes to the budget meeting. Also, I believe the next meeting, you're going to have a discussion about assessments. I think it was due on the agenda for the second meeting of November and to talk about the shift between commercial and residential properties, try and give us an idea of what's going to happen next year. I would also ask the board to pay attention to looking at the elderly exemption ahead of time and not wait until next year like we did the last time. Our property increases on average were about 23%, but this year coming up in the following year, I think you're going to see increases that are closer to 40%, 45%, and that will be devastating for those folks who are receiving the exemption. They're not going to be able to hold on if you can only cover for 50% of it like you did the last time. So I think that's really important. Anyway, there was one other thing, but I didn't write it down and it slipped my mind. And there's still 30 seconds left, so I'm yielding it back to you. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public? Seeing no one. Before I get into remarks by the board, I would like, we have someone who's... Oh, Jonathan Cathy.
Yes, hi. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I'd like to make a comment on the sick leave.
Name an address for the record, please.
Oh, sorry. Jonathan Cathy, 32 Hartwell Brook Drive, Alderman Elect for Ward 7. I'd like to comment on the sick leave policy. Did we, do we know, was it vetted through equal opportunity rules? Because from what I understand, that would be a violation of equal opportunity, because you're not supposed to give employees incentives that are of value or a certain amount of value. And two sick days would obviously be two days of value for work that they're getting for getting the vaccine. I didn't know if that would open us up to potential employment lawsuits or something of that nature. I don't know if that was talked about in committee. I'm not aware of that. And if it was, that's cool. I just wasn't aware if that had happened. If not, personally, I think that it's not a great policy. I think it's unwise, because you're basically bribing people to get the vaccine if they don't feel comfortable with it. And then you're also telling other people that if they don't get the vaccine and they get sick, that they lose, they're basically losing out on two sick days, which those sick days are worth money. So they're losing out on money, which I think is unfair and unwise. And also, curious if it has a sunset date, or if that would ever be rescinded at some point once the COVID pandemic had passed. Thank you.
Thank you. So I would like to take this opportunity to invite the Alderman Elect to join the Veterans Day Parade this Thursday. And Alderman Lopez, did you give them the place to meet?
Yes, so typically it kicks off at 11:11 in front of a ticket box of home and save. But for people who are coming, I would probably recommend coming about half an hour earlier.
And maybe bring him home, which is heading on his company. Thank you, Alderman Lopez. Remarks by members of the board? I'll start over here tonight. Alderman Clay.
Thank you. I want to thank the poll workers and Clerk Lovering and Assistant Clerk Allison Waite. Everybody did a phenomenal job. I should say in Ward 3, there were some very ugly moments. And the moderator and the poll worker stood strong and stayed there. Ward 3 had over 30% participation, voter participation rate, which was pretty amazing. We were second to Ward 1. We can never beat Ward 1, which was, I think, 32% or a little higher than that. I'd also like to say that I've been working with United Way on a program called the Thank You to Healthcare Heroes for the Two Hospitals. I have something that I put up a flyer in the National Civic Sounding Board on my personal page, as well as on my Aldemannic Facebook page. If you're interested in helping with that program, please contact me. I have my home number and my cell phone number there. I would be interested in having as many participations where looking to get $2,010 gift cards. It's a big leap, but between the United Way, myself, and our community, I think we can do it. So thank you.
Thank you. Remarks, Alderman Dowd?
Yes, I'd also like to thank Ms. Lovering and Allison and her whole staff doing a great election again. Been working with them to, especially with the new school over at Fairgrounds, to make sure that that works smoothly, and it worked perfectly, so, kudos. And also for the poll workers, I don't think people realize how long those people are there. It's like 16 hours usually. And they don't get paid a lot, because they do it because they want to do it. And it's getting harder and harder to find people, as Ms. Lovering, I'm sure I could tell you. And I just want to, at least the entire city, but definitely for Ward 2, want to thank them for all of their efforts. They did a great job. And the other thing is that finally, we have the new bus loop opened up at Penna Truck. For buses coming from Henry Burke to the Penna Truck, we're having to go around cars to get into the school. Now they have a separate entrance, and that was paved today. It'll be striped tomorrow, and the traffic should improve. It'll improve significantly next summer when we finish the entire widening of the road. But for now, it's a new improvement. Thanks.
Alderman Karen.
Yes, thank you. I too would like to thank the board workers. I know how much work they put in, and Sue and her staff work very diligently to get it done. And no, Sue, I will not be going back to work anymore, now that I know what you do. But on another matter that really has upset me very much, I do not go on social media. I find that people can say things that are not true and get you angry. And so it took me a week and a half to calm myself down. But I was told that there had been some discussion on social media regarding the annual senior outing that the Park and Recreation Department has been facilitating for over 50 years. Unfortunately, the information on the post was not accurate. Back in 1970, the recreation director at that time felt that the city should do something to honor and thank our Nasher seniors for their constant and continued support of the youth programs that the city offered, and also to create an event for this often overlooked population. So the annual senior outing was created. At first, the event took place at the Alpine Grove in Hollis, because their facility could host up to 600 people. There was no charge to participate, but you had to be a resident of the city and also to be 30 years of age or older to attend. The department received many gifts and donations to provide to the seniors at this inaugural event. And those gifts and donations in support of this event for our eldest residents continue to this day. The event eventually moved to Nasher High School North when the Culinary Arts Program became involved, and they provided the sit-down meal, as well as the students being able to interact with many seniors who were in attendance. The number of participants was reduced to 250 seniors. When that program changed, it was moved to the Marriott Conference Center. Since COVID started, the Park and Recreation Department did not want to stop the event, so they came up with the idea to do a drive-by event so that the community could still know that our seniors were not forgotten. This event took place at Stella Stadium and will again this year. It is important to remember that the Park and Recreation Department does not exist to serve only our youngest residents. It exists to serve all of our wonderful community members. The City of Nasher provides activities for all ages in our community, and this program, like many city programs, is funded through the city budget. Many seniors have been attending this event for a great many years, and a good number of them are now in their 80s and 90s. They see old friends and meet new ones and have a great time. To say this is not needed shows just how uninformed you are. Attacking an event such as a senior outing shows a lack of respect and understanding for our senior population and a shortsightedness regarding the value of this kind of event. There are so many more important things you should be worrying about than to be attacking an important event like this one. Seniors are a big part of our community, and to provide one event a year, to say thank you is something we should all take pride in, that Nasher has stepped up to the plate. And as for the senior center, the city provides funds for them to put away for reserve and to do maintenance to the building every year. They are a nonprofit agency that does not get fully funded from the city to run the center. So to accuse them of not doing enough for the seniors is really not acceptable. And I apologize for making this very long, but this really hurts my heart.
Thank you, Alderman Karen. Alderman Lopez.
I wanted to thank everybody who supported me as Alderman and for re-electing me, but also everybody who worked at the polls as well. Barry Carden, who I believe the president is familiar with, Fred. All of the people there, I really very much appreciate it. But I also wanted to thank Mayor Doncic for his recognition and comments regarding Kathy Belknap. I know she was a major part of poll working every year. She was missed. But they were able to, with your recognition, make a little bit of a memorial for her, and it meant a lot to people who saw it and care deeply for her. So I just wanted to thank you for helping make that something special. Additionally, I wanted to comment on a situation that I think we've heard about over the summer repeatedly, that there's a larger number of people sleeping unsheltered outdoors than we've seen traditionally. There are groups that are starting to move more close to downtown because it's getting colder and they need access to resources that I don't feel that we were able to. colder and they need access to resources, that I don't feel that we were able to adequately address the needs of during the COVID pandemic. I know I was a little bit outspoken last year about our decision to, instead of having adequate decompression shelters throughout the state, give them tents that we would later on, in some cities, they would just tear down, assuming they're on state property. So I feel like we have a lot of, as a region, a lot of people whose needs are not being met. As was commented earlier and reflected by the grant that we're receiving, the opioid crisis hasn't fully gone away. If anything, we've seen a surge in numbers during the COVID epidemic and more recently as time goes on. And there are a lot of recovery programs and people working in the recovery community trying to make a difference and to combat that, but one of our most essential tools for doing that, Safe Station, was reorganized into different types of programs that don't meet the same needs. And one of the things that set our Safe Station apart from others was that we also worked with people who were struggling with alcohol addiction. So as the weather gets colder and as people struggle with those addictions and the restrictions of some of the emergency shelter programs, we're seeing people who don't, who can't fit in that gap. We're also seeing shelters at near or preparing to get ready for overflow capacity, and these are issues that are going to be continually evident in a community. I have been working with the continuum care. We did have a series of meetings where we talked about having warming stations and looking for emergency overnight solutions as well. Several of the committee members, or continuum members, felt that there wasn't enough data, but several felt differently. So I am supporting any efforts to address those people who do not fit criteria, are not reflected in data, but are very much present on our streets, even today. Thank you.
Alderman Tenza?
Thank you, Madam President. So unfortunately, I will not be able to join the parade on Thursday, but I wanted to wish a happy Veterans' Day to all the veterans here in the chamber, as well as in our community. I think we all appreciate the sacrifices the veterans and their families have made on behalf of all of us over the years and during their terms of service. I know we have a number of very people who have honorably served in the city, as well as other folks such as Alderman Lopez, Alderman Clea, who have served our veterans as they come home and have been important parts of our community. I think it's important to recognize that, for the first time in two decades, you know, we're not going to be... We don't have people serving formally in armed conflict overseas, which is a good thing, and hopefully now we can turn our attention as a country to the veterans in a way where we are taking care of all of their needs and serving them, you know, properly as they come home and be, you know, continue to serve in our communities in other ways. So thank you to all the veterans and happy Veterans' Day. Also, just thank you to Clerk Lovering, her staff, all the poll workers. Congratulations to all the folks who ran in the election. Certainly, it'll be another great two years for the city with the Board of Aldermen and Board of Education that was elected and re-elected, and looking forward to watching everyone continue to bring their important ideas to the city and strengthen us all around to the community. Thank you.
Alderman Juddi?
Thank you, Madam President. I want to point out to everyone that through the leadership of the Chairman of the Infrastructure Committee, Chairman Santa Claus, the Board of Aldermen has authorized free parking from December 6 through January 1. And so the idea of this is to encourage people to come downtown and shop and use the restaurants and support our merchants, but it does not include Main Street, so it's for Zone 3, which includes the garages. So to the folks out there, you can park for free during this holiday period, and please come downtown and support our merchants. Thank you.
Alderman Harriet Gathright?
I want to echo with my colleagues, thank you so much, Ms. Lovering, for your service to the city and to us, and all your staff, and all the poll workers. I appreciate all that has been done, and to all my constituents out there that did vote for me, I thank you as well, and hope to see you again soon.
Anyone else? Alderman Clemmons?
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to, again, I don't want to sound like a broken record, but I think, you know, I just want to recognize the city clerk in her efforts, because it was a truly fantastic election. Things went off without a hitch, and, you know, we had higher, I think, expected, higher than expected turnout, which is always a good thing, and that went well. I also wanted to just take a moment to welcome all of the new folks who will be joining us on the Board of Aldermen. We have quite a slate of new representatives coming in, and so I want to wish them all well. I look forward to working with all of you, and finally, I just want to wish everybody a happy Veterans' Day. Thank you.
Alderman Lopez?
Sorry, Alderman Tenza reminded me, because I forgot to say it. Alderman Clea and I will literally be serving veterans on Veterans' Day, so I want to thank Joanne's Kitchen and John and Belle's Coffee Shop for helping us get together a meal, and for all the members of the public who went to Joanne's, purchased a $5 meal for veterans, which helped pay for the cost. I think they're getting ham, macaroni and cheese, Southwestern style corn, and whatever Jess makes at John and Belle's is amazing, so I appreciated the support for the idea. It was through Operation Enduring Welcome, and we are trying to help build a more receptive community for veterans, because there are programs that do a great job, such as Harbor Care, of helping veterans find their place. They've beaten veterans homelessness, they reached functional zero in Nashua, and they're working to do that for the state. But then, as a city, we want to make sure that when people are coming here for, you know, the recognition and the support that they need, that we're also able to welcome them and help them find their link in our community and our neighborhoods. So little meals like the Veterans' Day thing go a long way towards that, and it was great to see the community supporting that.
Is there anyone else? No? Okay. Committee announcements? Alderman Dowd?
Yes, Thursday, the 18th, at 7:00 PM, Joint Special School Building Committee at Nashua High School North.
Alderman Karen?
Yes, thank you. Special personnel meeting will be held on Monday, November 15 at 7:00 PM, and we will be discussing the appointment of CFO Griffin to tax collector.
Any other committee announcements? I guess I forgot to weigh in on remarks. I'd like to thank the city clerk and her staff for all the work they did this last election. They work hard, they work long hours. It's much appreciated, and congratulations to everyone who ran during this election, and to those who won, and to those who didn't win. Thank you for putting yourself out there for that. I also would like to wish all veterans, especially those here in the chamber, a happy Veterans' Day. Alderman O'Brien?
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to make a motion that the November 9, 2021, meeting of the Board of Aldermen be adjourned by roll call.
You've heard the motion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien?
Yes.
Alderman Clea?
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly?
Yes.
Alderman Dowd?
Yes.
Alderman Karen?
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons?
Yes.
Alderman Lopez?
Yes.
Alderman Tenza?
Yes.
Alderwoman Lou?
Yes.
Alderman Juddi?
Yes.
Alderman Laws?
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver?
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gathright?
Yes.
Alderman Muschere?
Yes.
You have 14 yeses and 0 nays.
That motion carries, and we are adjourned at 9:09 PM. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.